Make sure everybody's mics are on. Troy, let me know when you're ready. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We'll get you first. Let's have him first up and probably. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Eastern City Council. Today is Monday, August the first, two thousand and twenty-two, and the time is now seventeen P. M. What we call this meeting to order, I would like to ask Pastor Leon Crawford to come forth and deliver prayer for today, please.
Good evening and God bless. Father in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day, day that you have made. We rejoice and we're glad in it. We ask for your wisdom, the guidance, the care for our city and our nation. Continue to bless our mayor and the council as they move forward, our city. Let your hand be upon them. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. All rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with physical liberty and justice for all. Adam Clark, roll call, please.
For the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Watley. Councilmember Chisholm.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaw. You have a full house.
All right, moving right along with approval to the agenda. And we know that we are taking off item H. We need others to be added or.
Oh, it's not.
Item. Want to sell. Although. And L. Hold session, ma'am. The other. Is there a motion to accept the agenda? So who is the chair? It's supported and moved properly. Any other discussion? You're none of the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carried more right group. Presentation or discussion, public hearing, present agenda. Wish pleasure.
Someone.
There's support for the discussion. Hearing none of the papers, signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? I just have a motion carried. Went around boards and commissions. Anyone? Boards and commission? Did you hear folks say no board review? But I know last about we didn't do any either. Tevin Hall, you're in the audience tonight? Officer Hall? Please come forth. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tevin Hall to the planning commission. Is there support? Or is it? You make the motion.
I make the.
I come home. I make the recommendation and you make the.
I hold the move.
Okay, there's support. Any discussion on that?
Can you pronounce the name for me, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, your name.
Tevan Hall.
Tevan Hall, okay, Tevan Hall. Is that what you were correct to be on? All right. Officer Hall, all right then. Any other discussion? Hearing none of the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, sir, come tomorrow. Congratulations, please. Get sworn in with the city clerk. And we'll see you at the next planning commission meeting. Thank you so very much. All right, any others? You know that we have at least, I think, Mr. President, what you got over there? One more, two more vacancies than one?
There's one now. You know, I did send a correspondence out to two different people. They didn't get the package. They haven't gotten back with me, and so I know maybe they've reached out to you directly, but I'm waiting. Soon as I hear anything, I'll shoot it your way.
They haven't, and you definitely know that, because it relates to boards and commissions. Looking for people to serve. At the same time, we want people to serve in the capacity of their expertise, their passion. And then also to making sure that they show up to the. Amen. That's important. So we know that Officer Hall has been, he had his application in with me for some time. Now he was surprised tonight, right? Also. Patience is definitely a virtue, so definitely welcome. I know you do the job. All right, moving right along. Any others? All right, here, none getting off into it. Let's go right into new business. City clerk, please.
Item A is item to consider approval of the Inster Police Department Command Officers Association of Michigan Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Wish pleasure. So move to the support for discussion. Question.
I know I asked about the differential and me also about the education benefits. I want to know and see like maybe the question by Twitter, how much will actually cost the city? For the contract.
Say your contract.
So we're talking about the five percent raise.
How much will it cost?
There you go.
Yeah, come off.
No, that's already.
Oh, okay.
Any other question? Hearing none of the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carried. I'd be pleased.
Is to consider approval of the Inster Police Department Teamsters number two fourteen collective bargaining agreement.
Wish pleasure. And we would probably support it in discussion. Question, compliments, wash.
The cost of this. How much would it cost? I know you said thirty thousand C I L. How much would it take?
What do you mean in terms of the rate? Five percent is across the board.
Five percent across the board. Okay, so thirty-five from both contracts. Okay.
Any others? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carried. Congratulations, PD. All right, item C.
Item C is to consider approval of the revised neighborhood stabilization program, also known as N S P.
All right, and I know that it relates to Melanie, Melanie Heinzby and our special project managers just coming aboard. So I say Allison, not along with Taylor, our realtor, myself, Curtis Dean Barge, Steven Williams, Rebecca Daniels, and Peggy Bishop. We had a chance to kind of go through the N S P program as it exists currently. And as you all know, that we have basically a developer's agreement that when we receive the first right of refusal, refuse of program from the county. And I'm just putting this out, spending a little bit of time on this, so we can just educate the people. Because it's for some strange reason, everybody calls me about property in the city. Or we own property within the city. We do own property within the city, which, of course, are our collective buildings that we do our business out of. Also, too, we have properties titled through us from the county that may not have went through the first right of refusal program or that the auction didn't pick up. Typically, those are lots or demo properties, properties that need to be demoed. We don't necessarily want those. But at the same time, we're looking to control those so we can work with the county or work with other entities to get to get those properties taken care of. We don't own a lot of those. So what we do have a lot of is we have a thousand vacant lots within the city. Our realtors have been doing a really good job of putting that out there. Troy has it on the website. It relates to the listing. Mario, our assessor, is going through right now, getting the list of all of the city home properties in the city, so we can list all we will, because the city is not in the business of being a real estate agents. We shouldn't be doing that. When we load on to these vacant lots, number one, that's a liability. So it's the insurance that's incurred. Number two, we got to keep the property up. And Mr. Vivis, we know that I'll be on them all the time about all these vacant lots in the city that we own and other people own as a relation to the grass being overrun. But what happens in July by the treasurer's office, he basically vets the list at the end of March, March thirty-first, for several foreclosure, comes to the city for first right of refusal. We have thirty days to vet what we want as it relates to property, whether we want to keep any properties at all. And you say to the treasurer, here's our check in the end of the thirty days, which now it's, it'll be August fifteenth, I believe it is. And it relates to the list that came out a little bit late this year, because they were going back and forth whether they were going to do a full foreclosure, which this is not a full foreclosure this year again, because COVID, they've allowed people to stay over or get offered to different programs to help people stay in their homes. So what we're looking to do is continue on with the program as we've had it, where the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we have to be vetted. Five, have five years of experience at least doing residential properties, have two hundred and fifty thousand in the bank. We've had several developers that we approved last year, which you do have a list of those. We had a couple of those that didn't do everything that they needed to do. And as it relates to the contract, if you don't do whatever you need to do within a year's time, then the city is in their rights to go back after that property, which is the reverter clause. And we do have property, we do have a lien on properties before they can be sold within the city of Inster. The biggest thing for us is that we want to create homeowners within the city. And all of you, we've been talking about it, we've been going back and forth, as it relates to just the census overall, we know that fifty, like fifty-seven percent of our population in the city of Inster are renters. I'm not saying anything against renters. I've rented properties, been a renter myself. At the same time, it's the landlords, for the most part, especially those that we know that are not following the rules as it relates to the city of Inster. And then when they put people in the houses, people are not aware of the rules as it relates to the city of Inster, as it relates to noise ordinance or cutting the grass or whatever it may be, that we know that right now we work with code enforcement to try to tighten that up. But the main reason for this program was to create homeowners. So what I'm looking to do is we're talking about the revised piece here is number one, we've always allowed our employees to be a part of the program, which they'll basically have the first right. From like if you approve it today, then by Friday, they'll have to look at the list and say, hey, I'm with this one, I'm with that one. However, and it's kind of, it's been, our employees have been on top of it. They've been like already on it. They've been on properties before the list even came out. So know that they're in waiting. The other part of it is that we have people that are living in these properties now that are, used to be, they were, they are the homeowners, but they lost them in the foreclosure program. So the treasurer, it should be, we've been talking back and forth to him and I, and he said, Mayor, you're the last, literally, you're the last rights of them. So if they've been living in a property for over five years and they lost the house for the tax program, what I'm looking to do is give them a chance to stay in their property. That's what I'm looking to do this year. We only have like forty, I think it was like fifty properties on the list, and you guys have those in front of you. I want to be able to put it out right now, put it out here to the community right now, and give them a chance to come to us. They've already been to the treasurer and say to the treasurer, hey, but they have to have the money and understand that. You've actually, we're looking to raise the material for the city from a thousand dollars to two thousand dollars. So for each one of these properties that we sell, there'll be a two thousand dollar back to the city. The, all of the fees that, closing fees and all that stuff, of course, we'll cover that. That'll be covered by the buyers as well. So the city stands to gain two thousand per property, because we want to cover our costs. Like say if we had to board a property up, clean a property up, or whatever it may be, we haven't done that in the past. We just stuck to the following of the paperwork. But I know it's properties on the list where we've went out and cut grass, we've boarded them up, cleaned them up, whatever it is, because we know there's a lot of vacant properties within the city of Inster. So just trying to get back into land control, but really putting it back into homeowners' possession. So when I, when I'm saying revised program, this is that part. Next year, we will be looking to add hopefully another tier, because we do have a lot of people within the community that are wonderful developers in their own right, but they may not have two hundred and fifty thousand. They may have a hundred thousand. You know, get ten homes, but they can get two homes. So I want to be able to add that tier into next year's program, because this year the list is kind of short. So I wanted to give you guys that information before you made a decision. Again, all of the listings are here. We do have some local developers that we're actually looking to add to a list that's here tonight. Peggy Bishop, Lucas, who's been vetted and have all her paperwork as it relates to being a developer here in the city of Inster. Your Hometown Realty and Investments LLC, I believe that's Curtis Dean Barge. H and H Properties, which is a passion. I'm sorry, H and H Properties and Holdings LLC is, who was that saying? That Mr. Page, how you doing, sir? And then Midwest Investment, that's a passion right here. Darlene Smith Aldrich, who you guys know is on our chamber. Then A T T P Investments LLC was Tyrone and Anthony Paisley. So saying all that, motion is on the floor to accept an S P program. As it's been laid out to you guys and any other questions on that, as we're going through, so I just need a motion. Your motion. Support or discussion, compliments, wow.
You said we have a list of the homes in our packet?
Yes, of the homes of the, that's here now to accept. Yes.
Okay, I don't have anything in the other one. This one?
It's in electronic copy? Give her the hard, she can have my hard copy.
I don't have anything. I go from the Teamsters to approval request.
Nothing in my package.
The little.
So it's on your electronic packet.
It's on my email.
Yep.
Okay, and also the revised wording or the revised thing is in there?
Yes.
Then there's.
It's actually in your hard copy. That's in your hard copy, because I know I need to make sure that we got that as it relates to. And it's just really, it's just adding again the homeowners' position for them to be able to get their properties back or get a chance to. Because I understand this is going to go really quick. So if you guys approve it today, basically what's going to happen is I'm going to say to the homeowners, hey, Treasury called us. I need a certified check by Friday. If you come up with it, great. If you don't, that's what it is. The employees, at the same time, are going to say to, I'm going to say to them, hey, here's the list, pick out what you want. And they're going to tell me, I'm going to say have a certified check by Friday, and that's what it is. If they don't, by that time, then it goes to the developers. We're going to break them down. Basically, we have houses on the south side, we have houses on the north side. So we basically said, we have, say for example, we have forty houses left, basically. We'll say, okay, this person gets two from the south side and three from the north side. Or in each person, basically each investor will get that. Now, if you're a new investor, and I've already told them already, you got to prove there, you know, what they can do and their capabilities. So they'll get one to two houses depending on what we, what we have. I hope that answers your question. Okay, any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Which is pretty reasonable, Mr. Chair, because, I mean, as I look through the packet, I really want to get to that hundred and fifty thousand, so that it won't be such of a struggle for especially hometown.
Right.
Developers to make sure that they can get in, because as you looked at some of the checks and some of the bank statements or what have you, people are trying to ante up their money and also even trying to put together boards to make sure that they can, you know, meet this threshold.
Right.
If we can get next year as well to maybe a hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, there's some that over five hundred thousand dollars in there, you know, they could be able to go head on and do whatever they need to do.
Right.
We can get, get hometown. You are in the community.
That's right.
At least a hundred and fifty thousand to be able to move forward and grab in these homes, because in, in the whole essence or in the whole scope of things, it stabilizes our community.
Correct.
And that's what we want, you know, we want, you know, abandoned homes, vacant homes, where we can put together here a board of votes that can get two hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, so we can move the city forward. This is actually going to move the city, I mean, quickly.
Yes.
Stabilizing our community. Then we can know that name. That's all, that's all.
I, well said.
I have a few questions. Is it going to still be, I think the old one that you had, right of refusal, was it gave it to a year?
Right, yeah, there's still that.
You're going to pay a year?
Yeah, so basically what happens in, in Safe, Allison and I, my executive assistant has been really doing a good job at this. At that six months threshold, you guys will get a report and say, okay, this is what we have going on. These are what the houses are doing. In the year's threshold, which we have a whole summary now, basically saying that these are the houses, what's going on with them, these are the steps that they've taken. If no action's been taken at all, what we're saying to our attorney is, hey, execute that document that they signed, and let's get that property back at low cost to the city. So we can sell it to some, one of our other developers in the community that want to get them on back on the tax road and get them done, because we, what we found out is some of these properties were actually sold during the N S P program. And now we're back on the list again, and two from two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah, yeah. See, I don't want them to struggle.
Right. Correct, but they can't handle it, they can't do the work. And that's why we're here to vet. Safe is going to continue doing that. And then, of course, like we assembled the team of our local realtors and brokers, Rebecca Daniels, Ernestine Williams, Peggy Bishop, Stephanie Taylor and Curtis Dean Barge to help us with that. So we're going to continue on formulating it all the way through. Any others? Hearing none of the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carried. Item D, please.
Is to consider authorizing the city of Inster to permanently change the names of the following streets to forever memorialize the lives of slain Inster police officers, Ira Parker, Danielle Tubel, Clay Huber, and Kenneth Woodmore, who were killed in the line of duty. The following streets are proposed, South River Park Drive between Inster Rome John Daley, to be named Sergeant Ira Parker Drive, West Street between Michigan Avenue and South River Park Drive, for our Officer Daniel U V L Drive, Hill Street between Michigan Avenue and South River Park Drive, Officer Clay Huber Drive, and lastly, Bayhand between Michigan Avenue and Trow Bridge, Officer Kenneth Woodmore Drive.
Wish your pleasure. The movement, Mr. Chair. There's support? Move and properly support any discussion. We will do the ceremony on August the twelfth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries, that's going to be. Talking about that. All right, then. Item D, please.
To consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel, case number LD twenty-two dash twelve, located on the west side of the Harrison Street between Carlisle and Beach, in the amount of one thousand dollars.
The movement, support. The mood and properly support in discussion? Hearing none of the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? I just have a motion carries. Item F, please.
To consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel, case number LD twenty-two dash fourteen, located on the east side of Harrison, north of Avondale, ID number four four zero zero three five zero zero seven nine zero zero two for fifteen hundred dollars.
Wish, wish your pleasure.
The move.
Your support, support. Move and properly support any discussion. Hearing none of the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? I just have a motion carries. Item G, please, and let's do that one, please.
Okay.
Record, go ahead, please, go ahead.
Consider approval to purchase five separate vacant parcels located on, one located on Cherry Street, Spruce Street, Hickory Street, two on Hickory Street, three on Hickory Street. All the parcels, excuse me, are located north of Cherry Street for six thousand dollars.
More for Cherry Street. Wish your pleasure. The movement, Mr. Chair. There's support? Question.
Help, Mr. Chair, this is, this is zone for the M one, right?
Here off of Cherry Street, Hickory Street.
Because this the, the, you're parking lot or something like that.
And I think we do have a purchaser here. Trudy, is that for you? Those, you are sure. Okay, come on, come on, Stephanie. Stephanie, come on up here, please. Our realtor, that way you can speak to the questions that you may have. I'm sorry, I lost my voice at the thirtieth reunion this weekend, so it sounded like my cousin Hardy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Anytime a person need light industrial, like where they're trucking, anything pertaining to light industrial, they need, it's only M one, pretty much. So yes, it is M one.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay, thank you.
And they're, what they're looking to do, they're store some vehicles.
They need to store their trucks and everything.
I just want to make sure we survive one else.
Thank you so much.
Anything else? Hearing none of the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? I just have a motion carries. Item H, please. Right, yeah, you told me. No, no, no. Tell me to move it up. So.
So, item H is to consider approval to close Moore Street between Beach and Chestnut on the August thirteenth for a block party hosted by Anthony Booker.
Move with them. There's support? Move and properly support any discussion. Hearing none of the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carries. Item Y, please.
Next one is to consider approval to close Florence Street between Princess and Sylvia on August twentieth, August twenty-seventh or rain day for a block party hosted by Vincent and Donna Lawrence.
Wish your pleasure. The move. Move and properly support it. Any other discussion? Hearing none of the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? I just have a motion carries. Item J, please.
Is to consider approving In Town Riders Annual Car and Bike Show to be held on September eleventh with having access to the property on the tenth of setup.
At thirty-two fifty Mill Bell Road, correct?
Yes.
So Inster High School. There's support? Support. Move and probably support in any discussion? Hearing none of the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Item K, please.
Item K is to accept the recommendation, recommendation of the city attorney in the matter of Blackwell versus City of Inster.
So movement, Mr. Chair. Your support?
Support.
Move and properly support it. We need a roll call. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have a motion carries. Next item, please.
The next item is to accept the recommendation of our city attorney in the matter of Sweet Bee versus City of Inster.
Wish your pleasure.
The movement, Mr. Chair.
Support. Move and properly support it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carries. All right, moving right into it. And let me just say this for the record, we will be sticking to three minutes tonight, please, for the public, because our city clerk has to be here five A. M. in the morning, as we know that tomorrow is voting day. It is a very important day for our nation. But we definitely know in the city of Inster, and I think Steve Chisholm, I know you've got some work to do still, right?
Absolutely.
All right, then. So Doc, I'm sorry, Doctor, Doctor, is it Dr. Leanne Crawford? Alright then, so, uh, Doc, I'm sorry, Doctor, Doctor, is it Doctor Leanne Crawford, true? You got Doctor, okay, you got your doctor, it's alright, come on up, brother. Alright, I know you're a pastor, Doctor too. Love it. You got a floor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm, uh, to the great city of Inkster. Long time, lifelong resident of Inkster. Of course, my ministry was moved to, uh, uh, city of Detroit. Since, uh, maybe about five years. Came back to do a different style of ministry, it's not church, but it's just more outreach in the community. And linking up with those that have other nonprofits to see if we could volunteer. But at this particular time, we're putting on our fifth, I think it's our fourth, fourth annual Boys Demand Program, where we teach boys how to tie a tie, how to change a tire, how to, uh, jump start a car, build a wall, along with shiver. It starts this Sunday, and every Sunday at three five one, Inkster Road, um, in the plaza. Um, so far, we have had over almost sixty boys to register.
Wow.
Normally, our numbers are about twenty, twenty-five. This year was great, uh, outpour of people coming. Uh, for various ci- uh, cities, we even had people coming from Toledo, Ohio. So, um, the program has been great. Uh, one of the things that we, we stress is more hands-on with our boys, seeing the demographics of how young men get in trouble. Girls are welcome, let me say that right, right away, young ladies are welcome as well, to participate. Uh, the last Sunday of, uh, Boys Demand, the program ends with a, uh, graduation. In that gradu- the night before the graduation, there's pizza party and, and all that. And that Sunday morning, the boys come dressed up with their tie, that they just learned how to tie. And, uh, we do a graduation ceremony. And so, uh, I just wanted to thank the city of Inkster and this wonderful council, and, and our mayor for giving us the opportunity to serve in the community. And, uh, it's, it's been a blessing, and so, if we still have time for registration for a Sunday, we, we're, we're not trying to turn any boys away, so, or any children away. And the age group, it really starts about as long as they old enough to swing a hammer, they can swing a hammer, uh, on tie a tie, we, we would like to work with them, but definitely, uh, we need more boys at the age of twelve to seventeen. And so, once again, thank you.
Excellent job, man, you've been doing an excellent job in the community, man, and it's not going unnoticed, I know that, um, you were even doing it throughout COVID, and working with our young men, and, and women in the community, but, um, you know, the part for me is the chivalry part, you know, this, I mean, you know, being a gentleman and being courteous always.
Guy right there.
Yeah, so that's good, I'm looking forward to it, um. And so it's free of charge?
Everything is free, we also feed the kids every session.
Okay.
So they, they eat good, and, uh, and everything is free.
Give us a phone number, so, you, you already taking more kids?
Yes, we are, I have suppliers, with, with all the information on there. Uh, the phone number is seven three four for those that are watching, seven three four five three six six one nine nine.
Any social media outlets?
All social media outlets, you can reach us, uh, my name, Leanne Crawford, of course, as well as, uh, CP, City Praise Cafe, City Praise Cafe.
Awesome, thank you so very much, sir, and you did, uh, mention that your pastors here, did you, did you do some that you had mentioned that your pastor was here?
Yeah, some, some of the men from, from my organization.
Okay.
From the church.
Did you wanna introduce?
Yes, this, this is brother, come on up. These guys been with me for years.
Yep.
And, uh, this is my chivalry teacher, this is my, he's gonna be working with tires and jumping start a car. We have many other men, uh, that are there, and sometimes fathers come, and they end up getting involved as well, and that's one of the most blessed things that we, we've seen that, you know, somebody signed their kid up, then the dad says, you know, why don't we go and see what's going on? And the next thing you know, the dad gets involved, and, uh, uh, as a volunteer.
Love it, keep doing the great work, thank you so much, appreciate it. Alright, have a good one. Mister Charles Burnley? I don't wonder, did I pronounce your name correctly, Mister Charles, please. Burnley, okay, got you. Please approach.
How y'all doing?
Good, sir.
Uh, you want the good news, or is it bad news?
Either way, either way.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm good. The jet's gonna come, come, come down to my house, they land.
What is it?
The jet's airplane.
Okay.
Uh, they driving all the fluid.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and, I watch my car, it's sad. And I can hardly see, I'm like back wounded now.
Okay.
You know, sometimes they so load themselves, I'd be in the house, and, you know, if you crack the window, you can smell the fluid.
Can you tell me what time that is?
All day, all night long.
Okay. And you're right at Harrison, what's your, what's your cross streets at Harrison?
Annapolis.
Annapolis, okay. And it's so funny, I just had a, a meeting with, um, Detroit Airport Authority with the other mayors in the surrounding areas, and we were of course overlooked some years ago, as it relates to, uh, the noise reduction that was given to uh, other communities this in close proximity, and they were trying to show us an air traffic, um, you know, like control type of pattern, and they, they, they tried to say that none is flying over the city of Inkster. But, uh, we were doing, uh, um, we were doing, uh, a program right out in front of City Hall, and a plane flew over, and we got it right on camera, so, we're with you in your plight, so we definitely will be working on that for you. And, um, we'll definitely follow back up with you, um, if I could, please, if you could just approach for me, could you approach, please? And, uh, with the clerk there, just write your number on there, please, okay? We can follow up with you. So, uh, just, we'll recognize for when we get to that part, thank you very much. Oh, you should have just stayed up here, so, okay, good.
No.
And what else you have for me, sir?
Contractors, when they come, come out and, uh, fix, uh, sewer pipes or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Main old cover?
Mm-hmm.
They dig them big old holes, and, uh, they never come back and do it right.
Okay.
They call themselves doing it right today, but it's still, it's a slant, you're all the way down, you know?
On Har- on Harrison Steel or Annapolis in that area?
Right on the corner.
Okay.
On the corner.
Okay, perfect.
And, and see, oh, oh, I, I bought that lot, you know, I take care of that a lot, I, I take pride in keeping that lot up.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
You know?
Hmm.
If they're gonna do it, do it right.
That's it, I agree.
I want to ask one question.
Yes, sir.
And I would like an honest answer.
Yeah.
Is there some bias in, in, in Inkster?
There's a what?
A bias, you do something on one side, you don't do it on the other side.
Oh, it relates to the south versus the north side?
Yeah.
No, that's not, I'm from the south side, let me say that right off, um, the city i- is it related to just financially, over time? We haven't put ourselves in a strategic plan to fix or to add or develop. So you will actually understand that as a community and how we build together. So it's not necessarily a bias, it's just for us strategically, we know we have the master plan, but we haven't done an action plan as it relates to how we do stuff, but we're, we are putting a lot of money in infrastructure right now on the south side of Michigan Avenue.
Yeah, because, oh, I see most of the stuff be happening on the north side or whatever there, you know? We're on the south side.
Yep.
We are human beings.
Yeah.
We pay tax.
For sure.
We got a right to, because the stuff that they do on the south side, they don't do it on the north side.
We working on it.
Yeah.
I got you.
And, and, oh, it's, it's just, uh, it seem like, it's, it's just a, a messed up program.
Well, and I don't think that's the intentions of anybody, I just think again, a- as we talk about, and this is a whole other subject, and we talk about the dividing line of Michigan Avenue, the north versus the south, and the incorporation of the city of Inkster in nineteen sixty-four, we know that a lot of things were developed on the north side. We know that right off, they weren't developed on the south side, so, we're in the process now of doing our best to catch up, and, and wholeheartedly working in an effort to make sure that everyone knows what we're doing and how we're doing it, and right now, the DPW director sitting back there, you see that man in the suit right there, you gonna go back there, talk to him? And let him know about that issue that you got going on, and then I'll follow up with you on another conversation as we have it together, okay?
Okay, thanks a lot.
You're welcome, sir, have a good rest of your day. Okay. This is the, is it? The book, please, I'm sorry, so I told safety stay up here with me, so I could pronounce your name correctly, I apologize. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Dubuk.
Alright, go ahead.
Okay, I'm here today, first, I've been a resident for Inkster for four years now. Um, I'm happy here, but I have an issue with the neighbor, and I'm gonna talk about it, if you give me a minute, where there's no laws or regulation where a person can place their cameras. So my neighbor put it on his tree in the middle of his yard, over my six-foot privacy fence, facing my bathroom windows, bedroom windows, my swimming area, my pool area. I called the authority, they said there's no law on that. So I went and went upon, and I went to the city, and they said he can put his camera wherever he wants to, and he has the right to protect his property. I'm down with that, I don't have a problem, but not when his backyard faces south, and the camera's on a tree facing north, on my backyard, so the authorities, the city, nobody did anything about it. So I went upon myself and put up like a tarp, you know? It's not touching the fence, it's not affecting the fence, it's nothing, just to block his camera view. I get a violation from the city, if I don't remove the tarp, I'm gonna get a ticket. And I'm just trying to enjoy the freedom of my backyard, and the privacy of my own home. So if you wanna keep your residents here, the person that's being violated should be protected and feel safe, and not be accused of violation.
Okay.
So basically, that's what I'm here to say.
I really appreciate that, and I know that we had another issue similar to, um, what you just mentioned, and I am, and, and it's just the irony of us talking about that, I am in the process of now talking to the chief police, um, but we know that that's an invasion of privacy, and from my understanding, and David, I don't know if I should even be speaking on this, but it is a civil matter, correct?
That's what I, I was hoping, you didn't ask to opine on it from the record, uh, but that is a matter between neighbors that, um, if someone's infringing upon your personal space of privacy, unfortunately, the authorities can't step in, but you could take civil action.
But I went and got a permit from the city, and I installed a six-foot fence. So he went and put a camera on his tree in the middle of his yard facing my backyard. If you're in a fitting room, you, there's no cameras in there if you're in a store. So I'm in my backyard, so he overstepped his boundary by putting it three feet higher than the fence. So what am I supposed to do, just let him watch me?
What, what the mayor said, and what I reinforced, that you can file civil action against, that you can ask for equitable relief. Show a judge that his camera is facing over your six-foot fence, and it raises your right to privacy.
Why do I have to go that extra step when the police department, the police department, no, that's violation, the police department can say something, and it doesn't have to escalate where I feel unsafe and uncomfortable, I don't wanna live here anymore. That's why, that's what causes that, so when you have a bad apple, you deal with the bad apple, not the, the whole bushel.
Yeah. But, I, I, I get you, I get you one hundred percent, and I definitely on the record of what the attorney is saying and reinforcing that, at the same time, law, we do have your information, correct, did you leave us with?
I did, but I didn't leave a na- a number, anything like that.
Please, and, and give us your number, and we'll see how we can, we can help, because we talking about neighbors, and maybe it's something that we.
I mean, you probably believe you're supposed to help, you know, protect and serve, and you feel safe.
Yeah.
But I put up a tarp to protect myself and my daughter.
We ain't gonna talk about it one-on-one, but I got you.
I'll give you my stuff.
Alright, and we gonna talk, and I'm gonna follow back up with you, okay? That's one thing I promise you.
Okay, just like some regulations.
Follow back up with you, I got you. Alright, alright, have a good rest of your evening. Alright, Juan Bradford? Juan Bradford? Just put a caveat on this one, don't just. Yeah, Juan.
Good afternoon.
Put a caveat on this, so what you can't talk about, don't just.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, uh, Department heads, I greet you, uh, with honor on this evening. I come before you today with a request, I think in this chamber tonight.
Sorry, I'm sorry. We're still in session? Or a plane?
And looking in the room tonight, there's about ninety-five percent of the people who went to Robishaw in the room tonight, if I'm not mistaken. And, uh, I'm here to, uh, make a request, if, and I think the mayor attended Robishaw, am I not, right?
Okay. Well, okay.
The, uh, over the weekend, we had a very, very beautiful time, uh, over at Inkster High, I, I give kudos to those who were in, uh, leadership to have such a great, grand, uh, event. However, you haven't seen anything until you came to Robishaw's All Class Reunion. And I'm just trying to speak as much truth as I can. Uh, and I may need some, uh, security detail on the way out. But I'm here to ask if we can have the third of September, I made a request, uh, that we have the park at, uh, Tyrone Wheatley. We've been doing this about nine years straight now. And I, I'm asking if we can be, uh, considered to be able to have that park on the third, uh, of this coming month. Uh, it's usually on a Saturday.
Or?
September.
Okay.
September the third, and it's, it's, we don't really need anything because we pretty much police ourselves, just sort of like what just happened at Inkster High, we are, we're a smaller group, I don't understand why Robishaw is such a smaller group than Inkster High. But, uh, we don't seem to have as much people come to our event as you guys did, maybe because you were a school before.
Uh, we'll be over.
I think we started in fifty-nine, and you guys were way, way back in nineteen eighteen or something. So I, I'm here today to ask if we could please be considered to have that date.
Yeah, and I think, uh, the city clerk, that you have their information already in there, packet, did they fill out the special events? Yeah, so we'll make sure we get it on the next council meeting. But I don't think anybody will go against that, because Vikings will show up, and we'll show out. Probably be over in the park before you get there. Alright, Octavia Smith?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council, and Inkster residents.
Good evening.
Um, just want to, first of all, let you all know that Inkster Task Force Farmers Market, next week is National Farmers Market Week, um, and we will be celebrating on the eighth, because the farmers market is every Wednesday from four to seven at two seven zero two zero Michigan Avenue in Inkster Road. So we hope you guys can stop by and at least say hi. Um, Western Way Medical, Western Way Family Health Center. Um, you guys know that anyone can go there, no matter what city they live in, um, for your medical and dental needs, and we do have twice a week, their charm, they just have their yoga on Mondays from six to seven, again, their charm. And from the Inkster Chamber of Commerce, they can, they can ask law to shop Inkster that where we live, we want to support our own, and candy stuff.
In the trash, I thought I was gonna ask you on candy trash, candy trash.
Anywhere, you see trash in front of your house, in your business, just pick the trash up and put it in the.
Are you guys doing any type of materials for that, is it basically saying, or cans?
Get those items.
Okay.
We have not got it, so we have asked the residents and residents, you know, here's what I know, that's the most you can do.
Sure.
If we do that, that would be major.
Yes, ma'am.
So are there any questions before I leave for you tonight?
Oh, sir. Ms. Smith, uh, Doc, Ms. Smith, Dr. Galani had been campaigning for that for some time, I don't know if you saw my recent Facebook poster yesterday. I actually had used that phrase and quoted her, because of the simple fact that a person traveled through our community and lost a load of trash on Avondale. Yeah, well, I, I did incorporate that in there, so I just wanted to make sure that you let Dr. Galani know, I, I am on board, and I'm pushing that agenda as she requested.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Thomas?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I have great evening.
Alright, Sergeant Libo?
Uh, secondly, I would like to make sure that everyone's aware that tomorrow is National Night Out. And it's also a launching day, we don't pick the date, it's set nationally, across the country, on the second to the first of August, everyone gets together for a block party at the local. Tomorrow's National Night Out is going to be just as big as it has been since the previous years. We have celebrity guests that are going to be there with entertainment including the Motown superstar Martha Reeves. A comedian and radio personality Coco. Um, Braden Smith Williams from the twins, the new friends, the YouTube stars. And Kala Te Gavin, the Scott sensation musician. We're also gonna have free food, house thousands, video game stuff, basketball courts, can be a lot of fun. But a lot of vote and they come and then come out. That is going to be tomorrow from six P M to ten P M in the police department parking lot. Please come out. It'll be a lot of fun. It's a free event. We're gonna have over thirty vendors there from organizations around the city. Do your information for you. If you have any questions, you all know where to reach me, three one three four hundred five three eight seven. Hope to see y'all tomorrow. Thank you.
All right, just real quick, um, it was a question before. And I just want you to put it on the record. Why would the city of Inglewood do an event like this on voting night?
So it's because it's a national night out. We don't set this date. This is again set by um whoever the national organizers are. On this day, across the entire country and military bases overseas, the first Tuesday in August, no matter if it's not election night or not. It's supposed to be the entire nation coming together with their police and community with the one goal of having a night out together to build stronger bonds. That's it. Unfortunately, it also happens to fall on election night, but it's just, it is what it is. We don't set the date and we want to be a nation that is united, so.
Yeah, and it's a lot of fun. Thank you so very much. Okay, I'm sorry.
Every year, yes, every year.
Go ahead, Council.
You wanna repeat that time again?
Six P M to ten P M.
Six P M.
To ten P M.
Seven P M.
Six to ten, ten.
Six to ten.
Ten o'clock.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, going around, city clerk.
Well. Tomorrow, August second is election day uh here in the state of Michigan for your gubernatorial candidates. Um, it's an important race. Please come out and vote. If you um still are holding on to your absentee ballot, please drop it off. At our office or in the drop box out. Thank you.
All right. President.
Audit had been uploaded, sent to everyone, so say audit had been completed. Most of the audit guys got a copy of it.
Did everybody receive a copy of the audit?
Send an email.
Yeah, but I mean, just saying, I want to put it on record. All right. Before we get off into Mayor and Council, one other person that wanted to approach the bench, please say there's that person here. Yeah, please. Approach and state your name for the record, please. Oh, hey, Mayor. Oh, you had to say, Mayor, hey, Mayor, how you doing?
I'm doing wonderful.
Go ahead, please. Say, state your name.
Good evening, Council, um, it's on our body. I am Kelly Gere. I'm the mayor of Lathrow Village. I have opportunity for our council meeting to be canceled tonight, so I'm able to attend yours. So uh I just wanted to introduce myself and just to basically say hello. I'm not a stranger to Inglewood. I actually worked with Felicia Rutledge for your elections before for uh two years, so just wanted to say hello and thank you for this time.
All right.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Since you are allowing us to say that, I am running for office for the twelfth congressional district awesome.
Anything about all that, there you go. All right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. All right, moving right into it, Mayor Council, uh, Councilman Shaw.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of things. Uh, I just want to say thanks to um Ms. Triplett. Ms. Joyce, Latoya Joyce, uh, oh, it's called Joyce, but uh Ms. Triplett for, for some fine, fine work that she did for me. Uh, in the DPS department. And I just want to thank her for a quick response. She's, 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 she's really on top of it. And then I want to give special thanks to uh Ms. Dawn Walsh, uh, code enforcement supervisor, for some help that she. Has been helping me with. We had this issue for a couple of years and she's, she's really been on it. And uh I really appreciate that, that she hasn't allowed it to fall by the wayside. So. I just want to say special thanks to Ms. Dawn Walsh. And also, I just want to encourage my colleague and wish him good luck, Councilman Stephen Chisholm on tomorrow. Uh, and also, you know, it was, it was a real interesting story that I was reading, Mr. Chair. About a young lady who was attacked. And this young lady who was attacked in her community. Um, unfortunate, coming home in early in the morning. About three, the report said about three twenty-eight in the morning. And, you know, it was right down the street from a, a all night bar situation, you know, and people were out for clubs and it. You know, it was witnessed by several witnesses, you know, as the police report had made mention. But the attack went on at three twenty-eight in the morning. And bystanders were by, you know, and they seen it, you know, there's a few that witnessed the passing of the offender. But the police report said that it was about three fifty before the actual call went in. I say that to say that, you know. If you see something. Say something. That is major. Then our community and with any attack or whatever happens, say something. Don't just assume that somebody else is gonna call. It was several minutes before the actual call went out. Because somebody thought somebody else was gonna say something. So I want to encourage our community, our stakeholders, if you see something, say something. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Councilman Shaw. Councilman Washington?
Um, just have um to the um three twenty-four Central Street. Um, I know I'm seeing one here for code enforcement, but just want to get an update on that because, you know, they're having a broken issue. And uh is um issues with uh trash and also vehicles that have sitting there over here. So just wanted to get an update on that.
Yep, I just saw you were up. I I went over there myself, so the vehicle has since been removed and as it relates to. The neighbors in that area, they made a complaint, but it's in a private fenced in areas and code enforcement is monitoring the situation.
Okay, all right, so I'll follow back up with.
Okay.
President, and then also with Emerson Street, I wanted to also get a update as well from the department and the situation that happened on Emerson Street. Um, and I know the chief is not here at the moment, so I'll follow up with him on that, but I'll give you that information.
Okay, please do. And I'll just encourage Council, like I said before, you guys, you know, I don't mind you dealing directly with the the admin, but please C C me on it. Because what happens a lot of times is that, you know, they have priorities already that we said as administration that we want, you know, certain goals to be reached each week as we're working. And you guys are calling, of course, your council, you want your district taking care of you, we want your people taking care of, so they're trying to get to them. And then things may fall through the wayside because I may call and say, hey, I need you to do this or do that. And, you know, when you get back to me now, then it's like, hey, I've been talking to them for like a month. So, but if you're not putting me in the loop as the executive person that oversees that, then I don't, I can't, you know, respond effectively. So please just C C me or any correspondence that you have with um the administration that way. Um, if it comes up and why it wasn't done or however we need to prioritize, we'll make sure that it gets done. All right, Councilman Williams?
I just had a few things I'd like to say. Uh, I talked with Officer uh Deputy Chief, Officer Slappy, and I had told her, I was apologized to her. Because I was gonna have my um community meeting of on the, on the thirteenth. I switched it to the twentieth, okay? And I'm I'm holding tight to that. And we're gonna be uh calling the people love coming together in District One. And we're gonna come together on the, on the big sidewalk. I mean, don't everybody holler because they, you know, everybody got their own way of saying they big sidewalk. But this is gonna be held right there between Pine and Fox Street. And then I'm I'm writing in some of the uh constructors out, some of the new con- uh construction managers to come out and talk about, about Lamont Garden. Mayor's on the agenda. I'm gonna have to, I probably had to put this security on him to get him, make sure he get there.
What's security?
Uh, my own security.
Oh, okay. You're talking about, oh, your security, okay, all right.
Okay, and uh I'd just like to thank Officer Hall. For a job well done. He came out, he addressed my children, and man, I tell you, they was really excited, you know? And you, and you'd be surprised, some of the questions that young folk asked, they put him on a rope. He come off the roof. And I, and I, I want to thank you personally, but we're gonna be paying uh making you even more down the road because. You know, what you done was a diamond dude to come out and talk to our young people. And they asked me about everything. They want to know about the cameras. They want to know about everything. And 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 be surprised how many of them know nothing about what the cameras do and and. And he talked about the uh, what do they call that gun? Not the gun, what do they call it? Uh, yeah, he talked about that and showed them what it'd do. And I just want to take my hat off to you. I was personally happy that we, we're going to try to get more of our. Uh, officers and especially we'll get our deputy chief out there to introduce her to the public. You understand? And we're gonna try to continue to let people know that Inglewood is the greatest city of love, okay? Um, that's all I had and I um, that's all I had. I'd just like to continue to try to. Talk about some of the things that's going on. I'm gonna allow the mayor and the other contractor to talk about the new improvements gonna happen over. In in District One. You know, I'm excited about it, but I think I should let the chief administrator of this, of the Inglewood talks about it also, you know?
Yes, sir.
Love you another day. Everybody just keep the peace and keep loving one another because, because. Inglewood is a great place to be, right, sir?
All right, good, sir. Good, all right, Councilman Chisholm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have four things. Um, one is a unity and community backpack giveaway. Um, I don't have that information readily uh in front of me. Do you have it by any chance?
I do not. Not either. Okay, um, you know, what is it, Ms. Smith? What's your names?
Yeah, so it's Saturday, uh, between yes, and there is a link online with actually all parents and, you know. Guardians who sign the children up through event rights, the body unity and community backpack giveaway is finally just like, just easily just register.
Where's it gonna be at?
The location on that, I think it's. I really can't say that far. I don't know.
All right, we got a little time. We got another council meeting before then, then we'll make sure we trace. All right, the way it comes.
All right, thank you. Um, and also just taking back and on that, a different back to, back to school block party and enrollment fair. Um, and I guess Mr. Bradford could have made this announcement, this is a bulldog back to school block party and enrollment fair. It's on August the thirteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-two, between twelve to three, three P M, three P M, excuse me. This is a free event to all families. It will take place at the Robishaw High School Athletic Field at three six zero one Jana Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, free backpacks for all students while supplies last. There will be enrollment tent, an enrollment tent and information. And it looks like it will be hosted by Bushman from FM ninety-eight W J O V. Also, let me go right back to this flyer now. You are cordially invited to attend a joint training between the planning commission and the Inglewood City Council. Save the day. Planning Commission Joint Training, August eighth, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty P M to eight thirty P M. This will take place right here in Inglewood City Hall in the council chambers. The topic of discussion is the Ready Redevelopment Community Certification, known as R R C. The presenter will be Elizabeth King, Senior R R C Planner. This is a community event. All are welcome. And last two things, what I was stating about earlier with what um Octavia Smith was talking about with canned trash. Someone drove through our city. I don't know if it was a, a, a resident or just a passerby. And it looks as a bag of trash flew out of the back of their truck and or their trailer. Now, I didn't see it actually happen, but. I believe after I departed from the Inglewood High Alumni Picnic, it was in the middle of the street busting. And within a couple of hours, the wind took hold and blew it everywhere, all over A I H's property, different residents' property. Um, one of the things, just because we always talk about us getting involved and taking care of community. Um, I just voiced it out loud to my mom and the gale about I was going up there to clean it up and they said, oh, we are too. And so they joined me yesterday. We, from Sherborne all the way down to Inglewood Road on Avondale, we picked up about four bags worth of trash just to, you know. Help out, you know, our staff is overwhelmed. We burden the taxpayers a lot when it comes to using contractors and things like that. So I just. I'm putting it out there, not for pity or kudos, but just as an example and to bring awareness. Because whoever the person was clearly didn't care that it was in Inglewood and didn't feel the need like I did. Because we're driving back and forth through there to just go ahead and clean it up. And Avondale borders my district and Councilman Shaw's district and. Everybody's busy, but I took the time, about an hour out of our regularly, regularly scheduled program. Unfortunately, we encountered poison ivy yesterday too. And I know how to neutralize it right away, but I didn't realize my mom had encountered it until today. So that's another thing, you trying to be nice, you know, the devil coming to bite you on the back of you. But uh, so that's that. I just wanted to put that out there and just let everyone know, hey, don't feel bad, um. Or like this is somebody else's job because I didn't want to overburden ordinance. I didn't feel like calling the police department or D P S. I said, let's just get out here and take care of it. Took an hour and we kept it moving. And then garbage day was the day I threw it all in my garbage and I was gone. Problem solved. Also, thank you. Also, um, yes, just to reiterate, voting is tomorrow. And I would like for you all to keep whatever candidate you are voting for in the forefront of your mind. Please take your souls to the pole as I've been stating at different religious institutions, to the congregation. Do like the pastor, the bishop, or whoever the leader of a religious institution is, and don't just take yourself. Take multiple souls with you, whether it's a family member, friend, neighbor, whomever, please ensure that they utilize their exercise, I'm sorry, their right to vote and they exercise it because. Uh, like Councilman Watley states, all politics is local and what we do is sit out on the sidelines when it comes to local politics or midterm politics. And we don't exercise our right to vote and then we want to bring blame everything on the top leaders. And we can make change at these local levels during local elections, midterm elections, whatever it might be, as long as we use our right to vote. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Right, sir.
Uh, yes, Mayor. I have a uh request from one of the constituents in District Three. And he was trying to uh figure out if we could put the council meetings when we broadcast them on Saturday. Because a lot of people work during the weeks and things of that nature, so if you could put it on Saturday so people who. Have time then can do it. Also, he said the other time is like it's, he doesn't know the weekdays, but it's like three A M. in the morning. So it's difficult to watch the council meetings. So he's requesting the council meetings be put on on a Saturday. This same constituent also uh required um. Wanted me to bring to the forefront his uh displeasure with some of the attire of the administration. He thinks that when you're at council meetings, you ought to look professional. And he says some of us do not. So any of you who think you don't look professional right now, you may want to take a lesson because otherwise, uh, that's it. Another thing I wanted to reiterate everyone's uh saying about voting, it is important. You have to have a chip in order to play the game. And your chip is your vote. And you need to get out there and exercise it because without it, you have no voice. So that and uh. I'm really pulling for my colleagues. I'll be out at Peterson School all day long. That's how dedicated I am to this particular election from seven A M. to eight, eight P M. I will be there saying what I'm supposed to say.
All right, Councilwoman, anything else?
No, that's it.
I just have one thing. Um, I'm not sure, but if you drive down John Daly, um, from Michigan Avenue to Annapolis. There, there have been some people doing donuts. And you can see the tire marks in the street. Um, maybe the police can just, you know, kind of keep a look out on that.
All right.
And uh, pardon me? I'm. See who? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't know who was talking to me. I'm sorry. Okay, okay, I will. All right. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. The chair is gonna yield a little bit of time. Just one minute, young lady. Come on. Thank you, ma'am. The chair is gonna yield a little bit of time. Just one minute, young lady. Come on, come on up. You know, we spoke a lot of form, but we wanna make sure that we recognize our you. We know that you've been on this train, boy, you've been doing it. So go ahead and tell us what's going on with you.
Hey, y'all, my name is.
Just don't leave this, put up the mic for us, closer to it. There you go.
Okay, my name is Andra Nae. Um, I'm actually in the, in the running for a Maxim magazine. And right now I'm in the quarterfinals and I'm currently in fifth place. And if I don't get to first place, this might be my last week. And um. I'm trying to get the front cover. And I've been going at this really hard for the past two months, trying to hit all the events. And I thank everybody that has been supporting me, the council people, everybody on the council members. Thank you, all y'all, for su- supporting me. Uh, Davey, I ran into you at the uh, was it Good Times? Good Times, yeah. Like, is that, it's like, come, come here.
Beautiful. That's what we're supposed to do. Good job, baby.
Um, so um, this is the magazine, that's the magazine. Um, this is my Instagram, Drebadtwentythree. I try to update everybody as much as possible, um. And I'm just doing this for me. I'm doing this for our community because Inster, we really, really need this. And we just, we have so much history, and I, I gotta do it for my dark skin and my brown skin girls. Because we are beautiful, we are beautiful black women, and we are, we just beautiful black people in general. But I just want everybody to understand that this is, is, is not just for me. It's, it's a passion that I've had for so long, and this is my craft that I've been working on for the past six years. And I've been a freelance model for six years. I've never gotten paid. And I've put together all my photo shoots, my, to the hair, to the makeup, to the clothes, that's all me. And um, I just, I don't know, I just.
You already won.
Like, sometimes I do feel discouraged because I just don't want this magazine. This magazine does not define my talent. You know, and it, and it sucks to like be in fifth place, and I'm like, these girls, they, I know they don't compare to me, you know, and it, and it, and it sucks, but. So it's, it's gonna be all right.
That's it. All right, all right, good luck. Keep moving. All right.
The vote to vote to vote, you uh vote on my uh Instagram is Drebadtwentythree. The link is in my bio. Um, the warrior votes is the votes that count. Some days they do uh do double votes. Um, so if you give ten dollars, um, I might get ten points, oh, well, I get ten points. The double days, you give ten dollars, I get twenty points. And the, the voting ends August fourth, and that was, that's the cutoff of the quarterfinals.
All right. All right, guys, support, do what we can to support our you. Always talk about it, be about it. All right, just a couple of things for me. I would be remiss if I didn't say long live a mighty Viking. And to all of those that had a part in participating, um, of course, leadership. Um, and it was just all types of hands moving over to make sure that we had a successful event. But also to the people that came out, and that's what it's about. People can put on events all day long, but if the people don't come out and then participate and then, you know, make it safe, make it clean and make it accessible, it, it's not gonna matter. But great job, long live a mighty Viking. Um, also too, during that time, we had a special visitor. Um, Robert Inster the Fifth came to the high school reunion. And he also too joined Robert Turley, our historian, on the tour. Um, and when I say that, um, you know, I, I wish we would have known earlier. So we could have done something because the last Inster was here in nineteen sixty-four when Inster was incorporated. But he came in, he's a professor over in, I believe it's Missouri. Uh, I'm not, I don't wanna watch that too much. But at any rate, we're gonna figure out how to get him back over. Because his great grandfather established the city of Inster and it's his namesake. So we wanna make sure that we recognize that and then do something more brandyos to welcome him home. Because, of course, this is Inster. And lastly, enjoy Inster. Enjoy Inster. Enjoy Inster. All right, call for German. Support. All in favor, say aye. Anybody say nay, they could stay. Go vote, vote, vote. Vote, vote, vote. Mr. Anderson.